And we are live.
Good evening. It's 6:30 PM, Monday, December 2nd, 2024. This is a Carney Board of Aldermen meeting. Call the meeting order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So have you had a chance to take a roll?
I have taken a roll. Everyone is present. You have the quorum.
Great. We'll move on to personal appearances. We'll move first to new employee introductions. If any department heads have any new employees to introduce, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Board. Uh, you want to come up?
Says no, not really.
I know, right? This was a not, this is a mandatory meeting. He didn't know he had. This is our newest officer, Officer Trey Hill.
Hello.
Trey is a veteran of the KCPD for 30 years, retired. Tried to do a little bit of real estate work and decided he wanted to get back in law enforcement, which we're thankful for him doing that. The funny story about Trey is this, in 30 years, Trey, how many people were you an FTO for?
About 15, I guess.
Fifteen or so, and now he's the trainee. So it's kind of a it's a learning experience for both, both sides of the, of the car. We love his experience. He's got a great attitude and, and really are enjoying having him here already. And I want to welcome to the police department.
Thank you.
Welcome, Trey. Thanks for being here and appreciate your service. Thank you, sir. Be safe out there.
Uh, next on the agenda, uh, honored to have our Executive Director of the Carney Chamber of Commerce, Mrs. Stacy Bratcher here to provide the annual report. Stacy, you got the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, Alderman, staff, everybody, yes. Thank you so much for having me. Uh, David made some copies, but I've also got a few to share of our annual report. Thank you so much to the Alderman and the Mayor for your continued annual funding of $20,000 for a full-time executive director to coordinate and promote economic development activities on behalf of the City of Carney. It is an honor and a privilege to represent my hometown. If you don't know who I am, my name is Stacy Bratcher. I'm your Carney Chamber Executive Director. And I am pleased to share with you the Carney Chamber of Commerce 2024 Annual Report. I have passed it out to you. I'm not going to read it to you. I'm just going to hit some of the highlights for you. Membership continues to grow. We've now hit 300, though we did see it slow down significantly this year. And our number of members, of members dropped also increased as well. That's the first time, this year is the first year that those two things have happened substantially in the six years that I've been here. We believe that this is in large part to the continued economic pressures that many of our businesses are facing. They're just starting. They have to slash budgets. And unfortunately, the chamber is an easy one for them to, they feel like to slash. Unfortunately, what most small businesses don't realize is we're the one thing you shouldn't slash because we can help you the most for a very reasonable amount of money. So we're going to continue to help our businesses. Let's see, we formed a leadership committee this year for the first time. They are charged with beginning to formulate a leadership development program that will be devoted to building, strengthening, and developing our community leaders. We seek to bring together a diverse group of existing and emerging leaders and empower them to become resourceful stewards of the community. We hope to introduce the program this summer with our first cohort beginning this fall. And we're really excited about this program. It will actually be, um, once a month for eight months. We are hoping that it will not only help elevate the leadership capabilities within individuals, but also their understanding of Carney and Clay County and how they fit within our entire community and how they can use their new leadership skills to help the community. So we want them to understand things like what you will be dealing with tonight. As we see on social media, there's always a lot of complaints, but there's very little understanding. But we want to tie that together and help them understand the issues and how they can help develop solutions instead of just complaints. So we're really looking forward to this. We also have with our social media, email, our mobile app, and our website, users continue to increase. We are very, I think we're over, I can't remember what it says on the thing. I didn't keep one, but I think we're over 2,000 downloads on our mobile app already. So we're super excited about that. We have been exceptionally busy this year with new events and programs. We took on the Carney Farmers Market. We added a part-time market coordinator to our staff. We also produced the Carney Holt Motor Show, which happened once a month, May through September. We partnered with the Carney Enrichment Council, the museum, and the Carney Library to produce the Smithsonian Crossroads Exhibit in May and June. The door count estimate for viewing that exhibit was well over 10,000. So super excited that we brought that many people into Carney to, to learn about our rural roots. We kicked off the exhibit by hosting a quilt walk on May 11th to draw attention to the exhibit, the farmer's market, and our local businesses. This resulted in an infusion of several hundred guests on that one Saturday. With the help of sponsors, we produced a shop local tote bag used primarily for new mover welcome packets, new teacher goodie bags, and at the farmer's market. In August, we introduced the first healthcare forum during our monthly membership luncheon. It was a huge success with the CEO of three of our hos, local hospitals participating, as well as our Clay County Health Center and a few others. We, we received great feedback about that program. Then in October, we hosted a first responders panel with our Carney Fire, Carney Police, and Clay County Sheriff. Unfortunately, Holt, uh, Holt Fire wasn't able to make it. But again, we received great response to that panel. And our panelists provided some really great information for our business community. We partnered with the Carney Enrichment Council, the Knights of Columbus, and the City of Carney in producing this year's Oktoberfest event. It was our first time doing that. We leaned into the contacts we had made with the farmer's market, and we were able to fill all 57 meter spaces. We were sold out. They didn't all show up, but we were sold out. And then hot off the presses, just received this today, we produced the 2024-25 Community Guide and Chamber Directory. I brought this small pile for your liter, the literature rack, wherever it went. We've got cases more, so when you need more, just let me know. Let's see, but our biggest news is that the Chamber Office now has a new home at 190 West 92 Highway. We increased our space from 1100, approximately 1100 square feet, to a little over 1,700 square feet. It includes much-needed storage space, a kitchenette, which will soon have a full-size refrigerator. Let's see, and it also still has the welcome center. The new space will also allow us to offer co-working space. We'll have two different spaces where we can host trainings, conferences, workshops. We can even clear all the furniture out and have pop-up retail space. So we designed the space to be able to fit multiple functions in order to suit the needs of our members and our business community. And maybe eventually we'll rent it out to the community for parties and events. Not wild parties, though. That is the highlight of our year. When I wrote, got all this, I got it on one sheet and I thought, oh my gosh, why am I so exhausted if it's only on one sheet? We had a crazy, crazy year, jam-packed full of stuff. We tried our best to promote Carney, to build economic development, to enhance our businesses and our community with, with good relationships. Any questions or thoughts for me?
Any questions for Mrs. Bratcher?
You're doing a great job. If you haven't seen the new office, I'm sorry, guys, I got a cold, but the new office is really nice.
Thank you. It's Shankston, all of my heating and cooling work. Thank you very much. That was the great thing about building the new office, is we did use all Chamber members to produce that space. So we're very proud of that. Thank you again for your support every single day. You are so very much appreciated. Our relationship with you and all of the staff, thank you very much. We appreciate that. And we look forward to continuing our work together next year.
Thank you so much for being here. The great report. Thanks, Stacy. Next item on the agenda under personal appearances is Fire Chief, Mr. Kevin Pratt, here representing the Carney Area Development Council with the annual update. Chief?
Good evening. Um, a couple of things I want to highlight. If you'll remember back in '23, we sold the first lot out of the new Phase 4 development. After a few, uh, issues that were, that came up with that, they finally have broken ground on that piece of property. So it is, uh, under construction at this time. This year, in April, we wrote a contract for the entirety of Phase 5 property. That closed in October, um, and that was with Cam Technologies. And they did buy all 17 acres of that phase, so there will not be another phase development, um, within the KADC. And then in July, we wrote a contract on lots 3 and 4 in Phase 4. That closed in November with Freejuve Properties, and most of you've probably seen that on social media around. That's going to be the new home of the Precision Athletics Sports Complex, so we're excited to get that going. I understand they've submitted some preliminary drawings and stuff like that already for that project. So, um, we're moving along. We've had a great year. We've still got some lots available, lots 1 and 2 in Phase 4 available. They're just over an acre each. And then we have lots 5, 6, and 7, which are about an acre and 3/4 each. And then we'll have to be considering where we'll go from there. That kind of brings me to the real point of being here. We've had a great relationship with the city. We unfortunately ran into a few times where property wasn't moving, so we had an arrangement with the city to, um, help us make our interest payments. With the sales of the lots this year, we have officially paid our note off for the development of Phase 4 and, and the associated property. So I have with me your reimbursement check this evening. That's all I got for you.
Chief, thanks for the, uh, you and, uh, your group's efforts. And, uh, thank you for the update. And, uh, we'll always accept the reimbursement money to put back in the coffers, so, uh, thank you very much.
Uh, next item is open public comments. We have anybody here this evening that would wish to speak under open public comments? Seeing nobody move, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Any questions from the board or items of discussion on the consent agenda this evening? Seeing none, if we can entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Consent agenda is approved unanimously. Next item this evening is ordinances. First ordinance for consideration is motion approving bill number 51-2024, presented by Stephanie Harris, our Finance Director, and ordinance amending Chapter 700 Water and Sewer Service, Article 2, provisions for services established in Chapter 720 user charge system of the Municipal Code of Ordinances of the City of Carney, Missouri. Stephanie?
Good evening, Mayor and Board. Uh, we discussed this a little bit at the last meeting, just in presentation format, so that you guys would have a chance to review it. This ordinance is basically what we talked about at that meeting. Again, it's to clarify, put into formatting, making adjustments for water and sewer bills, other requirements that have to be met in order to qualify for an adjustment, what those adjustments will be, as long, as well as shut-off fees and when that will happen. You guys asked at the last meeting for some comparative rates and how I had determined why I was suggesting $50 for a shut-off fee. And I left something on your dais for each of you, just, kind of just some additional information. November, we had 31 shut-offs due to past due balances. In our shut-off process, we normally send two staff members out to do a shut-off and a turn-on to provide support and security in the event a customer is upset or there's a child, under each child at the residence, and, um, just to protect the sitting. Each event, disconnect, and then the reconnect takes approximately one hour per staff member, and our average staff rate is $25. So to disconnect and to reconnect, that would be about four, four staff hours, $25 an hour, $100. And I had suggested $50 at disconnect only, to hopefully help offset some of that staff time that is related to a delinquent account. Neighborhood communities have the rates that are shown there. You can see it's anywhere from 20, Liberty has $25. That's the smallest, but it's most common to be $50 to $100 in other districts around us. And the late fee penalty is, again, the most common is 10% in five of the districts around us, or districts or communities around us. So I, our late fee hasn't changed. It's been the same since 2001. That's in this ordinance. It's, it's still 10%. We just wanted to clarify the language. Again, part of the ordinance is to, there was some not inconsistencies, but just wasn't very clear in the old ordinance. So we're just trying to clear up the language and make it more specific.
Any questions from the board on the proposed ordinance?
So Stephanie, I noticed that, um, under 700.025A, you've got one that's pool filling. They can request a sewer bill adjustment once per calendar year. But then also, under 3, we've got usage not entering sewer treatment system. It seemed kind of repetitive.
Um, there's other instances. Pool filling, obviously, they use the water.
Right.
And usage not entering the sewer treatment also, they use the water, but sometimes you can't tell, or they can't tell exactly why or what's going on. Pool filling is a very obvious instance. But usage not entering the sewer treatment, sometimes they don't know why that happened or what the purpose was. So there are break, you know, it's not a leak or a break, but there's other instances. Like sod watering for an extended period of time.
That's what I was getting ready to say. So the usage not entering sewer system would be for somebody with an irrigation system or something like that?
Um, more for the brand-new homeowner who's having to really soak their lawn. Not, not as much for the, since it's a one-time-a-year-only, it's not really set for the irrigation people who use it more than one time daily.
Don't builders already receive a discounted rate?
They do, but typically the irrigate, not very commonly do the builders water the lawn. The sod usually goes in right as the homeowner moves in, and it's the homeowner that's incurring the watering on the sod. That's what, that's what we've experienced.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Seeing no other questions, thank you for that report from staff. If we can read the proposed ordinance, first reading by title only, please.
An ordinance amending Chapter 700 Water and Sewer Service, Article 2, provisions for services established, and Chapter 720 user charge system of the Municipal Code of Ordinances of the City of Carney, Missouri.
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Second reading by title only, please.
An ordinance amending Chapter 700 Water and Sewer Service, Article 2, provisions for services established, and Chapter 720 user charge system of the Municipal Code of Ordinances of the City of Carney, Missouri.
I make a motion. Second.
I'll second.
Pull the board, please.
Alderman King?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderwoman Barker?
Aye.
Votes unanimous and ordinance passes unanimously. Next item is a motion approving bill number 52-2024, presented by Shelley Daniel, our Public Works Director, and ordinance approving the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission Transportation Engineering Assistance Program Agreement. Shelley?
Good evening, Board and Mayor. The city had applied for a Transportation Engineering Assistance Program grant to perform a traffic, safety, and operation analysis at the east intersection of 162nd Nation Road. We had received multiple customer concerns and, and which elevated this, um, intersection for both the city and the county to be evaluated. Um, the study will help us identify key attributes of the roadway, evaluate crash risks based on existing conditions, and make short and long-term recommendations based on proven safety countermeasures to enhance the safety of the location. Additionally, Clay County is partnering with us to pay 50% of the local match for the grant. The study will be completed by the end of May, and this ordinance approves the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission's Transportation Engineering Assistance Program Agreement.
Any questions from the board or comments on the proposed ordinance? I think it's pretty self-explanatory. Seeing none, if we can read the proposed ordinance, first reading by title only, please.
An ordinance approving the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission Transportation Engineering Assistance Program Agreement.
I make a motion to approve on first read.
I'll second.
Pull the board, please. I'm sorry. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Second reading by title only, please.
An ordinance approving the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission Transportation Engineering Assistance Program Agreement.
I make a motion to approve on second read.
Second.
All right, now let's pull the board, please.
Alderman Holt? Alderwoman Barker?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman King?
Aye.
Votes unanimous on second reading and passed. We'll move on to resolutions this evening. First item is a motion approving Resolution 59-2024, a resolution of the City of Carney, Missouri, adopting the board's priorities for the City of Carney and incentives for the fiscal year 2026, which will start April 1, 2025. Sheila?
So tonight, um, for your consideration is a, an resolution that summarizes what was discussed at the September work session that was held. This year, the board added to the four overarching priorities, um, quality of life. So if this is approved, then there will be five overarching priorities. There are longer-term bullet points under each priority. And then there are fiscal year '26 initiatives that staff thinks can be completed within a single fiscal year. And so the bullet points that are not under initiatives but are under the priorities, those are longer-term, where it's going to take a series of multiple years to fully accomplish. And so I don't know if you guys want to talk about the process or any thoughts about this, but...
Questions, comments from the board on the resolution? I'll mention, um, another good session, in my opinion, this year. We had a new facilitator and a new consultant that, uh, I, I think she had an experience in municipal government herself, uh, from Texas. A longtime city administrator in that area, and now she's out consulting, providing these services to municipalities. I felt a lot better walking away from this process this year. These meetings are always like, all of our meetings are always open to the public. Nobody showed up again this year. But we have a good recap of the discussions, some good images. And I think, uh, this is a good tool for us to use in our next fiscal year budget on, uh, planning our budget and, and, and planning for our future. Appreciate staffs and the boards, uh, long time and, and long day involved in that process. If there are no other questions or comments from the board, if we can entertain a motion approving Resolution 59-2024, a resolution of the City of Carney, Missouri, adopting priorities for the City of Carney and our initiatives, uh, for fiscal year 2026.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Resolution passes unanimously. Next item this evening is items for review and presentation. Uh, I believe our city administrator is going to discuss our annual employee survey results and our second quarter operation results.
It's kind of a joint.
Between you and Stephanie?
Well, joint, actually, between all of us. Everybody's going to kind of talk about their own metrics, but I'll kick it off.
Good deal.
So thank you so much. Perfect, and we can go ahead and go to the first slide, yeah. So, um, this is where we began. In February 2024, uh, we surveyed employees to get a baseline for comparison and to give all employees an opportunity to be heard. Back in February 2024, 45 employees completed the survey. So at that time, um, after seeing those results, those results made it pretty clear that the information that was being shared at City Hall in staff meetings and department meetings and one-on-one meetings were not being communicated in other departments throughout the city and outside of City Hall. So as a result of, um, those survey results, we really focused citywide on holding all-employee quarterly meetings, one-on-one meetings in every single department, bi-monthly. We instituted values-based performance reviews, and we constituted an employee engagement team and continued, um, sending out the monthly employee newsletters, and, um, the communication team that we had newly formed continued. Also at that time, department heads really thought that if we focused on these three questions, um, one being focusing on operations, one focusing on financial, um, operations, and one based on cultural operations, that if we really just focused on those three questions, we would be able to make a meaningful change throughout the city on the next survey results. And you can see what happened, um, for just those three questions. We had a 40-point increase on positive, uh, positive responses for day-to-day decisions here demonstrate that quality and improvements are top priorities. So, um, we increased up to 78 positive. 78 was the, um, the newer positive response rate. Then for the City of Carney effectively directs resources, funding people and effort towards the city's goals, we increased 34 points. And the leadership team at the City of Carney has communicated a vision that motivates me. Our scores increased by 39 points. And that is where we really, um, focused the most of our effort. And then if you go to the next page, you can see for our organizational alignment score, what happened was we increased, um, 27% higher to 78. what happened was we increased 27% higher to 76% between February and November when we re-surveyed. And then this next slide kind of shows that same thing. So you can see 49%, the green line are positive responses. That middle gray line, those are neutral responses. So if we had 29% of employees respond neutral, and then in February and in November, that amount decreased to 19%. And then we had 22% who responded unfavorably in February, and that went down to 5% in November. And that's kind of what that graph is showing. And then if you go to the next slide, thank you, David, you can see in all of our areas, there was improvement. So we increased six points under the focus and accountability questions, 29 points communication and collaboration. Basically, every single section, there was improvement. And that was after focusing on those three areas and then also implementing citywide, all quarterly team meetings, the one-on-ones, the new performance evaluations. And the employee engagement team and communication team have done a phenomenal job of suggesting changes that we have been instituting citywide. And so, you know, what's next? We made a lot of great improvement in only nine months. We want to continue building on our positive trajectory. The department heads, supervisors, communication team, and employee engagement team are focusing right now on understanding the latest results from our November survey and brainstorming ideas for future action. And we're going to continue doing an annual survey every November to keep measuring and seeing what kind of impact we're making. But the whole purpose is to try to understand what employees are telling us, then to act, and then to repeat the process to re-measure and continue trying to make changes. And that is... I don't know if you guys have any questions about the survey results, because next we're gonna go into kind of the operations from second quarter. And second quarter is from July through September. So...
I don't have any questions on the updated survey results. Does anybody else on the board? Okay.
Right, Stephanie, I'm handing it over to you.
Okay, I am presenting the update for City Hall. And for those who may not know, City Hall consists of the support service and a lot of support services and a lot of the staff that actually serve all the city departments, which includes IT, HR, human resources, accounting, legal, economic development, and administrative services. I'm gonna take a minute to highlight some of the things on the slide. Finance onboarded seven new employees during that time period. We issued 535 paychecks and 1,340 checks to vendors. We issued 53 business licenses, including new and renewals. Our assessed value for the city came in at $277.7 million. So that was great. We issued 11,431 utility bills with 99.5 million gallons of water sold, which is up 11.2 million gallons from Q1. And we administered 26 water shut-offs related to delinquent accounts during that whole quarter. And as I said earlier, we adjusted 31 in November, so... IT completed 131 help tickets. This was 60% more than Q1, so the transition rate from contracted IT services is well underway. City Hall invested 187.5 hours into professional education and training, which is up 20% from Q1. We ended Q2 at 48.8% of our budgeted expenditure amounts, so we are under the 50% anticipated for where we were at the end of the second quarter. City Hall was busy with a variety of initiatives during the second quarter. We issued distributed procurement cards and established a process to make purchasing easier and smoother, a smoother process for all the authorized employees. Sheila mentioned the monthly meetings continued for our employee engagement team and our communication team. Those new committees are integral pieces in building our culture and values and our mission at the city, fulfilling our mission. The K353 redevelopment plan was approved by the board for the area generally known as Original Kearney. That program provides abatement to homeowners and business owners who make substantial improvements to their property. The Westside CID was amended to add projects as an expense type that CID revenues can fund. The original language stated the CID revenues could only be utilized for improvements to Bennett Boulevard and Shanks Avenue. Now with the amendment, other public projects such as water lines, sanitary sewer, stormwater, sidewalk, streetscaping, trash cleanup can all be funded under the new projects code. The first anticipated project will be extending the water line from Lover's Lane or Sixth Avenue south to 92 Highway. Then it will run west along 92 and tie into the water line at Academy Bank. There were several projects which began in Q2 but will continue during Q3, such as auditing all the water accounts, the fiscal year '24 financial statement audit field work and follow-up questions. And work also began for the fiscal year '26 budget process and is still underway. Any questions on that?
Thank you for your report.
I am moving on to municipal court. Municipal court is in place to provide individuals with a place to obtain fair and impartial hearing on any alleged violation of the city ordinances cited by the police department, our code enforcement department, or our animal control department. In the first quarter of '25, there was a significant increase in the number of court cases due to the police department implementing e-ticketing, and 572 violations were issued. The second quarter had 303 violations. And while that is a decrease from the prior quarter, it is a 36% increase over the prior year second quarter activity. Year-over-year, it still is a significant increase. During second quarter, six court sessions were held. 331 cases were closed. Six warrants were issued, two warrants were cleared. The court administrator worked 44 and a half hours of overtime, and actual expenses were 45.8% of the overall budget at the end of second quarter.
Thank you for that report as well.
No problem.
Thanks, Community Development, David Pavlich. We develop the director, we have small department. Two other people in addition to me, so Mike Schwartz, our building inspector, he's been with us since May, at the end of May, and Kathy Turner, who's our animal control and code enforcement official. She's been with us just two months. So she's a recent addition, but we're glad to have both of them. A little more color in our slide, a little less medium.
A little less black and white.
A little, maybe not as crisp, but nice looking. You know, I have very limited paint skills. It still can give off the information we like to look for. So during the period, we issued 50 building permits with over $18 million in investment. Though of that, 15 million had to do with improvements that the school district was making to Kearney Elementary, Hawthorne Elementary, and Dogwood Elementary. Those improvements don't add to our tax base. It is good to have facilities and a good learning environment for kids because that does kind of help. People want to move here, they have, if we have big schools. The remaining $3 million primarily comes from single-family residential development. So a lot of those additional permits were, you know, decks or pools or commercial signs, things like that. Building Inspector stayed busy performing about 400 inspections during that period, which amounts to about six inspections per day. I know recently, he's been busy with, now it's a different quarter, but we've had some nice weather here and there. Today's really cold, so some concrete guys were really out trying to get some concrete working before winter hit. We responded to 25 code complaints. Now that truck with the grass growing out of that is not a real picture. That's just some graphic I put together. So we're a little bit lower on the code enforcement side, but included in that is an abatement that we participated in. It was a major abatement. We had some assistance from the police department, involved a lot of vehicles and boats. We appreciate the effort that the police department helped us with. And so far, it seems like things are a little better there in that neighborhood. Planning and zoning commission considered six submittals. They included the preliminary plat approval of Westwood North subdivision across Nation Road from Dogwood Elementary and the final plat for Noah's Landing, second plat. We hope to see construction in both of those here over the course of the next year. Other items include building code update, which will go into effect February 1st. The board approving ordinance probably within the month of that, for that. And then code amendment to help us implement the new return program for stray and feral cats. And I believe that we have had our first TNR cap happen today. So we're excited about that. And we're currently working on zoning code amendments, related to residential lot sizes to try and reduce the cost for new construction. And then amendments for commercial industrial zoning districts to transfer some additional development and improve the city's tax base. Thank you.
Thank you for that report, please.
Thank you. The park department strives to provide a welcoming, safe, and enjoyable environment in the city's 215 acres of parkland with our updates to the facilities along with many shelters for parties and gatherings and our over seven acre, seven miles walking trails. We continue to have our three full-time staff, Ryan Marcott, Ray Kendall, and myself. We were allocated one part-time employee this fiscal year, Jeff Ray Anderson. He was allocated 1,000 hours this fiscal year. Jeff has approximately 160 hours left that we will be using him come February and March as we gear up for our spring season. We had eight and a half hours of overtime in the second quarter. We were also allocated three seasonal employees. Between three of them, those hours ended in August and September as these people returned to school. We used a total of 818 and a half of the 1,000 hours allocated. Many hours of mowing and weed eating are on the slide, but dipped in the second quarter due to the drought, just as was in the first quarter. It's amazing the trash bags and barrels, the amount of trash that accumulates in the parks. We had 633 bags and barrels of trash that we collected. This slowed down due to baseball, softball, and T-ball season ending, but we still had the splash park open through Labor Day weekend. We still collect petway stations on the trail even as of now because we have a lot of people that still continue to walk the trail, but we figure that will come to a pretty screeching halt as the winter weather comes in. Tree trimming and removal of dead or dying trees started in the second quarter, and we've trimmed 68 as of the second quarter. And we're really happy that we had no vandalism incidences in the second quarter. To provide and maintain our playground safety, Ray Kendall, our certified playground instructor, or excuse me, inspector, conducted five inspections in the second quarter. And we're happy to say that even though there were some deficiencies, we caught those and we contacted the manufacturer of the playground down at Lyons Park. And new brackets and the tubes were repaired in the second quarter just in time as Oktoberfest was held. So we were able to get that done before the end of the second quarter. We had 972 participants in our leagues throughout the second quarter, and these leagues also overlapped into the third quarter, the start of the third quarter. Our budget to actual at the end of the second quarter is high. It's at 65.4%. But our leagues, except for the upcoming winter basketball season league, contribute to our fairly high percentage of expenses, such as the two sessions of soccer, one session of baseball, T-ball, softball, and also our flag football league, along with our three sessions of our pickleball leagues, which now are all complete. We can now report that our financial documentation is in and signed by the mayor and approved by the board. So we were awarded a $504,000 grant for developing a hall park, which will be on the corner of 92 Highway and Prospect. We had two free public concerts, 1,014 visitors, along with our July 3 fireworks event with 4,100 visitors. And we also hosted a fundraiser pickleball tournament on August 24th. We were able to, in our capital outlay, replace a couple of slide entry pieces at Jesse James Park to get those into compliance. And our biggest highlight that we had in our second quarter was getting both Mac Porter Park and Lyons Park playgrounds updated and more user-friendly. The wood fiber mulch was removed and new rubberized. ADA accessible playground surfacing was installed. And this was funded with use tax money. Looking ahead, and this has actually been done already, the big splash park bucket, we've had problems with the bearings on that splash bucket. We thought they were going to come out in early spring before we fire it up again and put new bearings on. It's not just us. I will report that it has happened with all of the bearings on the splash park buckets nationwide with this company. And I talked to them also down at the NRPA conference and told them the situation, and they came out already. And the new bearings are installed and we're ready for the spring season. So that's a big thing. This quarter is a planning quarter for our upcoming spring season, along with continuing to cut down and trim trees in the parks. And also, we do that because we get recertification through our Tree City USA. Just like all the departments within the city, we look ahead with our budget preparation for the upcoming fiscal year with items and priorities, keeping those in mind from the board of Alderman based on the priority setting session. And that's all I have.
Thank you for that report.
Yes. Like to report on the Fairview Cemetery metrics. Marcos Barbosa is our cemetery sexton. He has done a fantastic job in the cemetery. 76 hours, we're just been on cemetery cleanup. I will say it looks fantastic right now. Ray has helped with Marcos as we've spent 36 hours on tree trimming, and a lot of plants have been removed. He has also been tilling the graves and reseeding in front of the graves to make those graves look nice. There were five graves marked for burial or internment. In the second quarter, three grave plots were sold. And a lot of surveys gathering and updating data and upgrading the maps that haven't been done in numerous years. He's been doing a lot of that. And it will be a lot more, a lot easier for us to go out and identify different sections of the cemetery. So looking ahead, we will be coming here for cemetery rules for approval. Earlier in the year, I brought you our recommendation for the cemetery signs, and that will be coming down the pike to get that approved so we can get new rules and regulations up so everyone knows what they are. That's what I have for you on the cemetery.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so I'm gonna probably be talking for a little bit. I have four departments to go over. All right, so I'm gonna kick it off with Public Works, just kind of the highlights. In Public Works, we have five full-time employees working here at City Hall, covering the public works. Leadership, our GIS database, rideaway management, project inspections, engineering, and cash can replacements. One thing that everybody's always interested in is what projects we have. We have 18 active construction and consultant contracts. Of those, we have three active construction projects, which included the Shadow Brook culvert replacement, which is now completed, except some cleanup work. Our chloramine conversion project at the water plant, which is wrapping up. And our water tower replacement project for our south tower, which has kicked off. Of those, that totals over $6 million in capital investment. We have three active design projects underway, including our Mac Porter Park Trail Extension Project, our 19th Complete Street Project, and a pathways project that includes the Lyons Park Crossing and four of our sidewalk projects identified on our use tax map. That project will go out the bid this winter. We also have six planning studies underway or wrapping up. That included our transportation, our stormwater, our wastewater, our drinking water master plans, and two new studies kicking off for our Integrated Management Plan Grant that we received from DNR that was recently approved by the board, and our Connected Carney Planting Sustainable Places Grant that we just received from Mark. So both of those grants will receive this quarter, and Public Works is operating at about 24% of budget to actual. So that's what I'm gonna go over with Public Works. Next slide. Next, the water department. So it's been a very busy quarter at our water plant. The team of eight has spent a large amount of their time doing data entry to meet the lead-in copper rule deadline of October 16th. And they're also overseeing the active chloraminasupfectant conversion project happening at the water plant. The plant ran for 1,317 hours, averaging 14 hours a day treating 60 million gallons of raw water. Approximately 48 million gallons of water were purchased from Kansas City, which is higher than normal due to one of our wells going down. The water team also performed 9,400 tests, repaired eight water main breaks, operated 72 valves, flushed 20 fire hydrants, and replaced 27 water meters and installed 25 new meters for new construction. And they also handled the delinquent shut-offs. Our team has been very busy doing utility locates for the two fiber companies in town, responding to over 698 locate requests. Our water department is operating about 71% of budget to actual. Next. So next is sewer wastewater department. So we had over 64 million gallons of wastewater treated, running the plant about 62% capacity this, that quarter, which was down from previous quarters due to the drought-like conditions. As was presented by our consulting engineer, when it rains, we have a lot of inflow, infiltration, so, which will increase our, the amount of water. So I guess the drought is good for our wastewater plant. So there was also 185 tons of sledge processed, 78 list station inspections, and luckily we had no clogs that quarter. We have four, five full-time employees now at the plant, which will help reduce our overtime, but we still have one vacancy for a laborer. We have conducted over 675 tests, and the wastewater department is operating at about 55% of budget to actual. Next. So next is transportation or our street department. We have six full-time employees at the street department in the second quarter. That performed over, or performed 487 hours of mowing, 11 tons of asphalt patching, and replaced 150 linear feet of sidewalk and 165 linear feet of storm pipe and 101 linear feet of ditching. We also milled and filled a third of mile of Southbrook Parkway by contract staff this quarter. The street department is currently down, a couple of employees do, but we are actively trying to fill a foreman position. And this quarter, the team will mostly focus on winter operations, patching, and hopefully crack sealing. However, our crack seal machine is down right now, but getting repaired. And we're currently working on holiday decorations. And our transportation department is operating at approximately 37% of budget to actual.
I apologize, I can't talk and sit down, so I understand. My wife tells me if I put my hands in my pocket, I can't talk either, so I can't do that. We have a lot of information up here for our second quarter for our metrics with the police department. I'll go over a couple of the number of these things that kind of jumped out at me. We kind of called this the crazy quarter because we had so many things going on in the city that we were involved in that it was, and then we were shorthanded on top of that. It just, it got a little crazy. For instance, we had three basically brand-new people that we had in our FTO program, and we had three FTOs to train them. The problem comes about when you have one of those FTOs that leaves for three months to train his canine, and the other one goes on vacation. Now you have more cubs than you have papa bears. So we, you know, we just, we got through it. You know, we improvised. And the other thing that we did, one of the guys came up with a great idea. Why don't we have an FTO school? So we got a trainer that came up here. We utilized our training room downstairs. We were able to get six free spots to have FTO. And so we have six more of our officers and corporals that are now FTOs, and we got that done for free. So now we're prepared in case this happens again, we're not going to be quite under the gun. We went through the July 3 fireworks display. The park looked awesome, thanks to Ryan, to Ryan Eric and all the boys. You know, there's a lot of cars that go in and out of there in a short amount of time. That's a heck of an accomplishment to get that done safely, and we accomplished that. At the beginning of the school, we had our new school year, our new school resource officer, Cameron Phillips, started. This effort has provided huge benefits that we saw this last quarter. And we're really proud of his efforts, and we see a bright, bright future for that program. At the beginning of school, we always have what I call a certain number of jitters. You know, everybody's afraid of what's going on. There's a lot of media coverage about the school violence and everything. Then you couple that with a lot of false calls, you know, or internet pranks, if you want to call it that. We don't take any of those pranks lightly. We respond to them exactly like we would want our kids and grandkids to be supported. An example of that is that we, Plattsburgh had a report online of a violent encounter, and we went. We have an agreement with each other all over the area, and we sent five of our officers up there, and we kept enough back in the city where we were able to cover our schools as well at the same time, in case something, you know, identified or some sort of plan was in place. So we, I feel like we did a really good job responding to that and learned a lot. Anytime we go through one of these sorts of operations, I'm a big fan of sitting down in a roundtable scenario and to go over what we did right and what we did wrong. And we determined a huge communication issue in going to another jurisdiction. So we were able to kind of address that, and we're looking at that further as far as that goes, so that we can communicate with other agencies that arrive on scene. We didn't have too good a scenario for that. Routine interactions that we have with kids at school, it's really amazing to me how many times that we are reacting and going and sitting down with these kiddos that are having problems with mental health issues, suicide thoughts, running away from home. It's not like it was when we were all growing up. It's a very concerning thing. I gotta brag on my guys, they do an amazing job at this. They not only will go up on a call to help out the SRO or the district or something like that, they'll come back in a day or two later and sit down and have lunch with this child on their own, and then maybe even go with them to a class. And they recognize that somebody really does care and follow up, and we do a great job of that. And I brag on them every chance I get, but that's one of the really good things that they do. The other fun thing is at the beginning of school is to go in, if you've never done it, you might try it. I don't, check in with school before you do it, or you're getting in trouble, unless you got a uniform on. But to go and high-five these little kids getting off the car rider, car rider line, you know, that's a lot of fun, I'm gonna tell you right now, even when it's cold, it's fun. You get some good ones. Jesse James Festival time came around, and I think that the best way to describe a successful Jesse James Festival is that you don't have any huge complaints. You don't have any bad things happen, right? The numbers were probably down a little bit from last year, but our guys, you know, sucked it up. They worked a lot of overtime doing these extra duties, you know, whether it was beginning of school or Jesse James Days or all the other things, and they stepped it up. And that's where a lot of our overtime hours came from, but it's money well spent and we were well represented. Football season started, and as we all know, the Bulldogs had a great season up until last weekend, and I commend them for that. We had some, our police officers were there at each of the home games, kind of helping out with, you know, crowd control and being there to help support the school. And again, no big issues, that's a success in my mind. Along with Dave and his crew, his guys, we had a big project on the same day that we had a huge issue at school. We called it Operation Cleanup. So we divided and conquered. We had guys that came in and went and helped out with the abatement, where we towed 19 vehicles and helped clean up the neighborhood. And the neighbors are very, very appreciative of that. We've heard from them since then. We're trying to keep those folks on task and make sure they keep things cleaned up So when I looked at the metrics up here, I looked at the, in the first quarter, we documented 386 hours of paid overtime. In what we call the crazy quarter, we go, we had 723 hours. A lot of this was because we were shorthanded. So we're having to cover people when they're on vacation, we're having to cover for people when they were off on assignment. We're also having to cover new people because now we got two people down to in one car sort of thing, not as much coverage. So that's why we had some hours. The other thing that I looked at was in the first quarter, we had 2,451 calls for service. And then in this second quarter, we had 1,415 calls for service. Now, I looked at that, I couldn't figure it out, but then I got to thinking, what's a call for service? Call for service is either a self-initiated call, like a car stop, or it can be a dispatch call, right? And so these things combined, when you're three people down and you have three people as FTOs, which puts you further down, you're gonna have lower numbers as far as that goes. Our rest were still up, they're still good as far as what our expectations are and stuff. Our guys go out and work hard, but when they're getting pulled in a lot of different directions, a lot of different responsibilities, it's difficult, and they did an amazing job. And I promise I'm landing the plane, okay? Training overview, I want to talk a little bit about our training overview. In the first quarter, we had 806 hours of what's called PLS. There's a lot of different explanations for this acronym, but I'll clean it up a little bit, called Police Legal Science. If you poll the police department, they're gonna have a bunch of different names for this PLS. And basically, it's really good training, but you're sitting in front of a computer, and you're getting some pretty good stuff on law updates and that sort of thing, those sorts of, you know, important training, right? But in the past, that's all they did. It's all, they didn't do very much, and it's been since COVID, we couldn't go out, right, to do a lot of live training. My focus since I started was on live training. And this is a statistic that I am proud of. We went from 806 hours of PLS to 68. Now, we pay for this service as far as the computerized training, but the great part about it is we're doing live training. And one of the things that I really am impressed on is we're going forward with our firearms training, and we're going, taking extra steps to keep our guys safe. One of the things that I want to do in the future and continue to do is called squad training. So in other words, you work with the same three guys every day. We have four-man squads. They go on calls all day long, every day with the same four guys. There's no need to have just a signup sheet over on the wall for the next time you go to do firearms training, and you just go out with some random guys. So it takes a little overtime pay to do this, but when you can train as a squad, you react as a squad. You learn how each other think. You learn how each other reacts to different scenarios. And that is a huge, huge benefit. The guys really like it. We're working our way toward that, to being able to do that. It's a sound way to train safer, so that we're safer and we keep people safer as well. And we're doing a lot more of that dynamic kind of training, not only on the range, but even like this winter, we're gonna be doing some, you know, dry gun building searches and clearances and everything right there at the PD. So if you see some guys stacked up outside the PD with like plastic guns or something, you know, this is, you go through the motions is what you do. But it's how you train as a team, and I'm a big fan of that. A lot more to come on that. So we went from 384 hours of live training to 2,096 in the second quarter. That's my, that is my, one of my proudest statistics that I came up with here. We had officers that went to week-long and two-week-long training opportunities, such as first-line supervision and firearms instructor school at the Highway Patrol's Training Academy. I've been to one of those too, and they're good, and they get the same message. So all of our officers are getting the same training from top-notch trainers. I always give them the hard time about if I can do six months on twin beds and eat dorm food, they can do a week, you know, and it's not gonna kill them, but they still complain about this. So there's some other live training topics that we attended that include the FBI leadership training, first-line supervision school, canine certification, firearms instructor, SRO certification, drone pilot training, SRO certification. I said that twice. Sorry. And some chief executive training that I went to that was awesome. We're moving forward, and our officers are responding to the excellent training that we're getting, and our citizens are being better served. And I'll throw one more in there. Better training equals better morale, 100%. So community policing was one of our biggest goals for this quarter, is to spend more time in our community completing outreach programs. We were able to provide some training to the Church of Annunciation regarding church and facility safety. We updated the Carney Rotary Club with some events that were happening in the city. We met with some police recruits at the Law Enforcement Academy at the Blue River. We still have some plans on extending some community outreach programs with the police department, like we want to do some coffee with the police and some safety programs for our seniors living in our assisted living facilities. We want to get some programs together, we can go sit down and teach them how to be safer in their environments. I have a vested interest because my mom's at OPIU, so she'll keep me on task with that. Also, in addition to the programs serving our seniors, we plan to continue to develop a relationship that we have started with the staff at our two assisted living facilities here in town. We had one instance of a theft that happened at one of them, and after that, I thought it was really important to develop a better relationship with those two facilities so that they know when to call us, and they know when that they can feel comfortable getting in touch with us to say, hey, we think we have this going on, can you guys come and help us? Preferably before they fire somebody, because it's a lot easier to talk to them as far as that goes. I'm excited about everything that we've done in the second quarter. It was kind of crazy, but our guys stepped up to the plate, and I'm really excited about where we're going. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you. That concludes our quarter two update. Move on to Mayor's communications. I'll start with thank you to each one of our department heads for that great report. Thank you to all of, every single one of our staff. Thank you to all, every single one of our staff members. We, I know all of us know and see how busy we all are and all the projects and things we have going on. I think it's very important for our community to see and understand everything we do. So appreciate that report. Looking forward to more of those updates continuing forward. So thank you again to our department heads for those reports and for our staff, the boots on the ground that really work hard to make us successful. Next item I want to mention under Mayor's Remarks is a shout-out, congratulations to our Carney High School Boys Swim and Dive Team. Specifically, Mr. Whitaker Stewart had a really great state tournament again this year. I think individually broke some records. So congratulations to Whitaker and the Swim and Dive Team. Next item I want to mention is congratulations to our football team. So a hard loss this Saturday on the playoff game. Myself and probably four or five dozen other football dads were out there shoveling the stands and the field. And just another amazing time to see our community come together and work for the common good, the common goal. So thank you again to everybody that got out there early and helped get the field and stands and everything ready for the big game. Last thing I'll mention, our Mayor's Communications are, hopefully, everybody had a good Thanksgiving. I had a nice, long weekend with family and friends, and hopefully, everybody did the same. So that concludes my Mayor's Communications. We'll move on to the City Administrator's Report.
The only thing I have is that the next regular board meeting will be Monday, December 16 at 6:30 PM right here.
We'll move on to Alderman Discussion, Alderman Barker.
I would just like to say congratulations to all the young men and women who positively represented Carney High School and our community in all of the state events. Whether they brought home a trophy or not, they should be commended for getting out there and competing and representing as well.
Alderman Lehman.
I have nothing.
Alderman Holt.
I have anything to add.
Alderman King.
That report was good. That was awesome. I enjoyed it. Thank you.
We do have an executive session noticed up this evening, a closed session per RSMO 610021 Subsection 3, Hiring, Firing, Disciplining, or Promoting of Particular Employees by a Public Governmental Body when personal information about the employee is discussed or reported, and RSMO 610021 Subsection 13, Individually Identifiable Personnel Records, Performance Ratings, or Records Pertaining to Employees or Applicants for Employment. And a reminder, our meeting will be adjourned from there. So we could consider going into an executive session at 7:43 PM. So move. Pull the board, please.
Alderman Barker.
Aye.
Alderman Lehman.
Aye.
Alderman King.
Aye.
Alderman Holt.
Aye.
Vote unanimously, so we will enter into executive session. Everybody have a good evening, thank you for being here.